This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. Today is Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. I'd like to call this evening's city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
For which it stands.
For which it stands. One nation.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I have the real call?
Councilmember Boff?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Strobin?
Here.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Councilmember Hill?
Here.
Mayor Thornton?
Present. Thank you. Next to the consent agenda, if there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion. Thank you, council. Next, I have a proclamation that I would like to read. It's for the National Police Week. Proclamation declaring May 9th through the 15th, 2021, as Police Week in the City of La Center. Whereas, in 1962, President John Kennedy signed the first proclamation recognizing May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. Whereas, the safety and well-being of individuals is important to the prosperity of families and communities. And whereas, police officers throughout our communities are dedicated to protecting and serving neighborhoods, schools, and families. And whereas, police officers risk their lives each day, every day, in order to ensure public safety and enforce the laws of the land. And whereas, the City of La Center community values the courage and devotion of our local police as our collective prosperity depends on the integrity with which our law enforcement officers maintain peace and security. And whereas, National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day are opportunities to honor officers who have fallen in the line of duty and recognize the sacrifices made by the families of those officers and the families of those who continue to protect and serve our communities. Now therefore, I, Mayor Greg Thornton, do hereby recognize May 9th through the 15th, 2021, as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and the communities across the nation. As witnessed, I have to set my hand on the 28th day of April, 2021. Could I get a motion to approve the proclamation declaring May 9th through the 15th, Police Week in the City of La Center?
I make the motion that we accept this proclamation for the Police Week, May 9th through 15th, and Police Officers Memorial Day on May 15th.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to accept proclamation declaring May 9th through the 15th, 2021, as Police Week, and May 15th, as Police Officers Memorial Day. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, council. So next, we have a presentation this evening by Ms. Nancy Dow, who will present the 2020 Annual Report for the Clark County Commission on Aging. I'd like to welcome Nancy to our meeting, and we're anxious to see your report.
Thank you very much. I don't know why my video is not working, but I can read the page. Hi, everybody. Honored to be here. So, the 2020 Annual Report by Commission on Aging, can we advance the page a little bit? There we go.
And Nancy, do you want me to do this, these first couple?
Yes, yes, please. I think that's where she, yes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jenna K. I'm a staff member who supports the Commission on Aging, and I'll just be supporting Nancy in this presentation this evening as well. And so before Nancy gets into what the group learned in the past year, I'm just going to give a brief history of this group, just as a refresher. So, we know that the aging population is growing substantially, and that by 2035, the United States will, for the first time ever, be a country that has more older adults than children. And by that time, here in Clark County, more than 25% of the population, or 1 in 4 residents, will be 60 and better. In 2012, the then-county commissioners created the Commission on Aging following an 18-month study in which more than two dozen people from across the county evaluated the community's readiness for an ability to serve a quickly-growing number of older residents. So this diagram here illustrates the work in which the commission is engaged. Education, awareness, and advocacy are the means by which they carry out their charge to provide leadership, to manage and implement the Aging Readiness Plan. And then their topical focus areas include housing, supportive services, transportation, healthy community, and community engagement. So, starting in 2016, the commission began to pick one topic to focus on each year, and they spend the year studying various aspects of that focus area and then developing findings or recommendations to share. So 2020's topic was planned to be community engagement and advocacy. However, when the COVID-19 stay-at-home order went into effect in March of last year, the commission had to cancel its meetings and went on hiatus for several months. So meanwhile, the coronavirus spread, and it became evident that older adults were disproportionately impacted by the pandemic in a variety of ways. And as we've all heard, according to the CDC, older adults are at a greater risk of requiring hospitalization or dying if they're diagnosed with COVID-19. And the pandemic brought other concerns regarding the health and well-being of seniors, especially the communities most vulnerable. So these concerns included access to care, challenges technology that can connect people to healthcare, and social interaction, and concerns of isolation that can exacerbate existing mental health conditions. So given this information, when the commission resumed meeting virtually this past summer, they decided to commit the rest of the year to learning about the impact that the pandemic has had on older adults here in Clark County. And so Nancy is going to talk a bit about what they heard and learned through that work during the end of last year. Go ahead, Nancy.
Okay. So anyway, the COVID-19 impacts on older adults were the access to food, to supplies, and medications. There were housing challenges for vulnerable older adults. Impacts of isolation and lack of socialization on older adults, which was considerable. Slide, please. We also discussed access to food, supplies, and medications, whether it be in prepared meals, groceries, delivery, the transportation, and the socialization of those supplies. I mean, socialization in addition to the supplies. There were many housing challenges for vulnerable older adults, such as impacts on the houseless and those at risk. The service adoptions in senior housing in terms of partnerships and isolation intervention, and keeping residents engaged and healthy and not in fear. Next slide, please. We talked about the impacts of isolation and the lack of socialization, which brought about heart disease, high blood pressure, cognitive decline, and depression, and sometimes leading to potential suicide. And I will turn this back to Jenna. Jackie?
All right. Thanks, Nancy. So Nancy covered, you know, they heard from experts who sort of talked about those various topics. And the group's major takeaways begin on page 18 of their annual report. And a lot of their takeaways, you know, are related to things that we can all do personally to help support our community during this pandemic. But we're just going to highlight a few things that are more closely related to policy or planning-type decisions. So, one of the things which I think we already touched on is that some older adults have either had a lack of access to the internet or to certain computer technology, or may not have the skills or experience necessary to use a computer. And so these challenges, you know, they've mirrored a lot of the same issues that some students have had trying to learn remotely. And one thing that the commission sort of kept coming back to was that this access to affordable, high-speed internet service and support on how-to-use technology seems like something that's useful to people across all ages. And just want to highlight, if there's anything you all have an opportunity to do in your role as a council that could help support broadband, for instance, in areas where internet service may not be great, that's something that they wanted to encourage. They also, you know, as Nancy mentioned, we heard about folks who are working with the houseless community and with affordable housing communities. And, you know, the pandemic has definitely highlighted the need for housing that people can stay comfortably and not be at risk of losing stable housing. And there's a lot of work going on in the county right now. Some of the cities and also the county are working on housing projects, and the commission is interested to hear what kinds of recommendations will come out of that work to help support older adults who want to age in place in Clark County. Also, number three here is public health and local service providers are continuing to need the funding to support their increased level of service now, but then also to be prepared for whatever comes next. And so they want to encourage you all as a council, as you make budget decisions in the future, that if you have an opportunity to, you know, to support the service providers who are teaming with your jurisdiction in various ways, that they want to encourage you to continue to do so. And also, one of their main findings was that, you know, this pandemic has disproportionately harmed older adults, people with disabilities, and people of color. And they just want to highlight that it shouldn't take a crisis to be concerned about our most vulnerable community members, and that, you know, our community will be more resilient in future times of stress if we make sure we're always advocating for and for our most vulnerable community members. And number five, they are just sort of continuing to support, you know, as the vaccines roll out, for instance, the need to just continue to do what you can in your roles to help get out the word about to community members on how to get vaccinated and make sure folks who are interested in the vaccines aren't slipping through the cracks who might have trouble finding out about how to do that. And finally, they wanted to highlight that, you know, they were really impressed hearing from organizations that have really come together and collaborated during the pandemic. For instance, there were food service providers, like the Food Bank, coordinating with the community transportation providers and faith-based groups to get food to people. And I think they were really encouraged to just that collaboration, and I knew it was working. And just want to encourage, you know, more collaboration across public agencies, private organizations, that just help support our community members to get food. Next slide. So, in the annual report that you have on page 24, it covers what the commission is tracking in terms of progress on implementing the county's Aging Readiness Plan. And just to mention a few things that are in there, you know, they wanted to highlight things like the special shopping times that were put in place during the pandemic for older adults and other vulnerable community members. Is the type of, you know, it's an age-friendly business practice that is consistent with similar types of things they've advocated for in the past. And then also related to transportation, they wanted to share that the county council adopted an ordinance, I think it was at the end of 2019 or early 2020, where they were expanding pedestrian access between
Hi, Mike. How you doing?
and services along major streets. And also wanted to highlight that the Human Services Council and TLC Wheelchair Services launched a pilot project in 2020 that's providing free round-trip shuttles, transportation service, from an individual's home in North Clark County to and from Battleground. And it's aiming at providing access to multiple destinations like grocery stores, medical appointments, pharmacy pickups, community services, and social opportunities.
I'm going to go to, oh, you can hear a couple of cricks, okay? But don't worry about it.
It's open to seniors, people with disabilities, and those who are homebound, who, due to a lack of transportation resources. And although this past year has not provided the same opportunities for the commission to engage with the public as in previous years, they still try to raise awareness on the importance of advocating for older adults and celebrating those that work with and support older adults. For instance, they had their inaugural Silver Citizen Award that they gave out this past year. They had a few proclamations and then have been trying to keep the county and city councils up to date on their work as well. Next slide. So as the commission is moving into 2021, their work this year, they've decided to focus on the road to recovery from COVID-19. So this includes both looking at what does it mean to recover from the current pandemic, but then also how are we better prepared for the next community crisis that we have? So the commission's continuing to meet online. They're inviting guests to join them each month to participate in moderated fireside chat-type conversations. And you can see the topics that they'll be covering listed on this slide. And I think that's all we have for you today, and Nancy and I are happy to answer any questions if you have any.
This is Doug Boff. I don't have any questions, but I just want to say that we appreciate the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Thank you very much, Nancy and Jenna. Great report. And yes, we do appreciate all your hard work and everything that you're doing. So, and we do appreciate you coming to our meeting this evening and doing your presentation.
Absolutely. It was an honor. Thank you.
Okay. So next on the agenda is a citizen's public comment. Clerk, do we have any public comments for this evening?
Yes, we have four tonight. The first one is from Nella Perryman, 824 East Pioneer Loop, La Center. Mayor and council, is it true that the city sewer and stormwater bills are not sent out by city employees? Is this function done by an outside company at the average cost of $10,000 per month? Didn't the city purchase machinery to handle this? Why are we not utilizing it? I look forward to receiving answers for these questions. Thank you. The next one is from Suzie Terrell. It's 628 East 18th Street. I think it's criminal that the mayor and council think an empty $2-plus-million building is more important than the safety of the citizens. At the city council retreat meeting last week, a comment was made that, while we may not have to worry about what to do with the police department since they're all looking at other communities and will probably leave soon. How nice, an answer to your years of prayers and wanting to get rid of them. Treat them so bad that they'll seek employment elsewhere? I'd like to know how much it costs and exactly what our coverage time is to have the county sheriff's parole our streets compared to our own police department. The next one is from Sally Alkazin, 1000 East Heritage Loop, La Center. Mayor and city council, we were told the contract with Exegy LLC was for $20,000. Yet I see a dispersment to them of $16,787.50 in March and another dispersment of $16,136.97 in April for totaling over $32,000. Some La Center citizens would like an explanation for this discrepancy. Thank you, Sally. And the last one is from Joanne Tucker, 1002 East 24th Circle. Currently, all that is left of our police department is one officer and sergeant. As recent as this week, there was no coverage for La Center for a 48-hour period. And we still have no idea what is going to cost to contract for police services in La Center. And today's reflector, there is an article about Battleground. They were able to receive an additional $500,000 in funding and have already hired three new Battleground Police Department officers and will be able to hire a fourth through grant funding. Why was this type of funding never considered for La Center? Was it your plan all along to never have a police department on site? It is shameful how the needs, desires, and safety of La Center citizens have been ignored. Joanne Tucker.
Okay, thank you, clerk, for reading those public comments. As a rule, neither the city's council nor state staff will respond to those comments this evening, but we will respond by email to the individuals that have written the public comments here in the near future. Thank you. Clerk, if I could please get the screen changed to reflect the plaque that will be presented to Officer McDonald. Okay, thank you. So next on the agenda is the mayor's report. You can see that there's a plaque that's, a photo of a plaque is on the screen right now. I do have a couple of quick comments. First of all, Officer Greg McDonald submitted his letter of resignation to interim Chief Richardson on April 21st. I want to express my appreciation to Officer McDonald for his 13 years of police service on the La Center Police Department. This time, I would like to read his letter of resignation that he submitted. It says, Dear Chief Richardson, it is with a heavy heart that I submit my letter of resignation. I have enjoyed working for the City of La Center for the past 13 years. I would like to thank the citizens of La Center for giving me the opportunity to serve and to get to know them during this time. It was my goal to be able to retire from the City of La Center in the next 10 years. However, due to the current circumstances, it is no longer realistic for me to reach that goal. My last day at the La Center Police Department will be Saturday, May 1st, 2021. I would be happy to meet with you to discuss my resignation if you wish. I wish the community and the city employees much success in the coming years. Sincerely, Gregory McDonald, police officer. The city has accepted Officer McDonald for the resignation, and I wish him the very best in all his future endeavors. And this is a photo of the plaque that will be presented to Officer McDonald. And again, I do want to thank him for his dedication and 13 years of service to the City of La Center. I just have a few other announcements that I'd like to read. First of all, just a reminder that my next mayor's virtual town hall will be Wednesday, May 5th, beginning at 5:30 p.m. Just a reminder that our next city council retreat, again, this will be a virtual retreat, will be Tuesday, May 18th at 5:30. And I also want to remind the council that AWC will be hosting their legislative wrap-up on Thursday, May 13th. If any council member would like to attend that meeting, and this also will be a virtual meeting. If you could please forward your request. Marie, and she'll get registered. And then finally, I just want to mention to the council that the city has received a letter from a city employee. I believe you were all copied on that letter. And as you know, no decisions have been made with respect to the continued coverage, police coverage for the City of La Center. With regard to the allegations of misconduct that was addressed or that was mentioned in that letter, the city attorney will be including some comments in his attorney's report here shortly. Well, that's all I have for the council this evening as far as the mayor's report. Next will be the attorney's report. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. There's two things that I'd like to report to you on tonight. The first has to do with Riverside Estates receivership proceeding, which is a Clark County Superior Court civil action. A receiver was appointed to take control of and manage the Riverside Estates property. The receiver has the authority to assume or reject contracts that are in place but haven't been fully performed that affect Riverside Estates, and that would include a development agreement that was entered into between the city and the developer of Riverside Estates. We have a hearing this Friday, which is a motion that was brought by the city to require the receiver to either assume or reject the development agreement that was entered into between the city and the developer, which set several of the terms or requirements for the development of that property. The city's motion asks the court to set a deadline for the receiver to decide whether to assume or reject that agreement. And that deadline was May 14. So we'll go to the hearing. We'll see what the judge says in terms of establishing that deadline, and I will report back to council. The second thing I'd like to address is the letter that was sent to the mayor and council members by an employee, which included allegations which, if true, would establish that there was conduct engaged in by another individual that would be in violation of city policy. I want you to know that I contacted RMSA to make arrangements for the retention of an independent outside investigator to look into these allegations, and the arrangements are being made for the retention of that investigator. It's important that we have a prompt, fair, and impartial investigation. And to that end, it's important that each of you refrain from commenting on the allegations or coming to any conclusions about those allegations while the investigation is ongoing. And there's a process that's to be followed in this type of a situation. It starts with notifying both the complaining party and the subject of the complaint of what actions the city is undertaking in regards to the complaint. I did that this morning by notifying both the complaining party and the subject that the city is engaged in obtaining the services of an outside investigator and asking them, as I asked you, to refrain from discussing the matter while the investigation's ongoing. This is a personnel issue, and as you may recall, we discussed in our training our roles and responsibilities of the council and the mayor. Personnel issues are not a matter of the council's prerogative or purview. It's rather the, ultimately, the mayor's responsibility to deal with personnel issues. But I want to assure you that the proper process is being followed, and that starts with arranging for a prompt, fair, impartial investigation. That's been done. Be happy to answer any questions. Happy to answer any questions.
I think that answers it for me, Bronson. Thank you.
Mr. Bronson? Yes. Okay, sir, just a quick question. I live in, my name is...
Ron, excuse me, this isn't a time for citizen public comment, so if you could please refrain from asking your question at this time. Citizen public comment is expired. The city attorney will only address questions from the council at this time. And Clerk, if you could please mute all the microphones other than the council. Thank you. Sorry, Bronson.
All right.
Any other questions from the council for the city attorney this evening?
Bronson Dennis here. How long generally does it take to go through this process in your, from your experience?
That's a good question. The duration of the investigation is somewhat, it's out of my hands. I'm not conducting it. You know, you ask in my experience, which I'm happy to try and answer the question in that way. You know, and what I would say is usually you're looking at a matter of months rather than weeks. I hope that in this case, the allegations are rather specific, and the scope of the investigation can be pretty specific. And hopefully, we're looking at, you know, I can't make any promises, but I would hope that we would be looking at nothing more than two or three months.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for the city attorney this evening, council? Okay, thank you, Bronson.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda are, on the agenda is council comments. Councilmember Ball.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I just have a brief summary of this month's CTRAN board, CTRAN board of directors meeting. There were a few action items that were taken by the board. The first had to deal with property acquisition along the developing Mill Plain BRT project. CTRAN has purchased property necessary to complete the special stations along the route. Appraisals are complete, negotiations are taking place as far as purchasing. However, in the process of doing all that, it was discovered that one small piece of property was overlooked and needed to be needed to be acquired, and the board authorized the CTRAN to make the purchase of this additional piece of property. The board approved an agreement with Washington State University in Vancouver and was to make available to the students there the benefits of the Education Opportunity Pass. This is a program that's designed to encourage ridership and to promote community goodwill. Board also approved an interlocal agreement with Clark Public Utilities. This will allow the utility agency to begin work on various projects along the route. This will minimize schedule and cost impacts as the project is under construction. CEO Sean Donahue, he's in over performance review, is approaching. And the chair of the board is Mary Ann McInerney Ogilvy of Vancouver. And Mary McInerney announced that she has selected Mayor Adrian Cortez of Battleground and county councillor Temple Linds to assist her in establishing the review process for Mr. Donahue. And speaking of Sean, he had a few updates. He announced that CTRAN is talking with the Port of Vancouver about possible service to that area starting next year. He also indicated that CTRAN is talking with Canis from Oshugel about expanding the connector service to those communities. He also expressed his pleasure to announce that all CTRAN employees who want the COVID-19 vaccine have received the shots. And then Sean also mentioned that CTRAN has actually begun discussing the highway 99 BRT project. It's very early. CTRAN has been talking with RTC, that's Regional Transportation Council, about some startup funding so we can begin some initial discussions. The objective is to begin the planning process on the newest line, meaning the 99 line, as the construction commences on the Mill Plain project, excuse me. And that's all I've got tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good report, Doug. Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Officer McDonald for his 13 years of service to the city. I think that's pretty much all I have tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Servini?
Nothing additional to add tonight.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hill?
Good evening, council and mayor and citizens. And I look, it looks like there's a large group this evening. I'm glad everybody's joined us. Just a quick update, I attended the Port of Richfield Commission Meeting this afternoon. Just a couple of highlights that I thought maybe you might be interested in. Right now, they're looking at a new fire station in Richfield. It'll be somewhere across, pretty much across the street from the existing high school. That's underway or will be underway here in the next year or so. Also found out that they've approved a four-story senior facility on the east side of Interstate 5 at the Richfield Junction. A lot of activity going over there, but there'll be a four-story facility going in there. And also, there was quite an update on the overpass going over the railroad tracks there at Pioneer and found out that that project will be completed in about October of this year. And hoping, they'll hopefully have the first vehicles going across that bridge on November the 3rd. Also, just on another note, I attended the groundbreaking ceremonies at the Ailinay on Friday. Quite a festivity, and it's glad to be there, got a chance to meet quite a few of the tribal members and other officials. And it was a, it was a good, a good opportunity to see the 14-story hotel going in there. And also, I want to extend my appreciation and thanks to Officer McDonald as well as he ventures on to greater opportunities here in his chosen work. And so, mayor and council, that's my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is staff reports. This evening, we have several staff reports. The first one will be presented by the Manager of Administrative Services, Maria Swinger Inscape. Maria?
Good evening, mayor and council members. The March sales tax dispersment was $65,058, and this is compared to $35,788 in 2020. As far as staffing goes, we are in the process of screening candidates for the customer service representative position in finance. And with Janice Fowler's departure from the city, we are currently reassessing the needs of the department. As far as trainings, I attended a six-hour Public Records Act training sponsored by MRSC as well as the IRS's webinar on taxable fringe benefits. I also attended AWC's Small City Connector as well as ICMA's training on best practices to managing public spaces. For gambling taxes, we actually just received in payment of taxes from one of the card rooms today. So I will update that next month as to how much is deferred versus how much has been received. It does appear that we do have one card room that will pay, and then one card room is choosing to defer their taxes. But the first quarter looks to be just under $94,000, which is really one month and four days is what the card rooms functioned in the first quarter. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, just real quick, Maria. The customer service representative position. I thought that we are outsourcing the public sewer bills or something, so if we're doing that, why are we looking for a customer service?
Yeah, Tom. So the outsourcing of the bills is actually just the printing of the bill. It's not everything that comes with that position, which is setting up new accounts and the processing of payments. So we still need somebody in that role.
Okay. And Maria, who has been doing it since it's been vacant?
It has been a combination of finance staff and also Jesse from Public Works.
Okay, thank you, Maria.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Nice report, Maria. Thank you.
Thank you. So we next have our senior accountant Riley Barbera, who will be presenting our first quarter financial report. And not a lot of you have had a chance to meet Riley yet. He is a CPA that started with us in January. He came to us from a CPA firm in Seattle, and we're very fortunate to have Riley and his strong skill set onboard with us here in the city. So I will turn it over to Riley to give our first quarter financial report.
All right. Thank you for the introduction, and for all of you that know me, my name is Riley. So this is my first big report that I did while I've been working here, and so might be a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. Some of the, some of the information is slightly different, and also how it's presented. So if you have any comments, something you'd like to see different in the future, just let know. Let me see if I can screen share here so I can go through this. So we have the first quarter in the books. Things have all been reconciled. It's still possible that we'll do some allocations of expenses, where something, you know, got stuck in one fund, it needs to be split up, so there might be some differences as the year goes on. But I've done essentially my best to project how the year is going to go based on Q1 so far. So some of the big highlights in Q1 is the card rooms are open and generating revenue. I'm sure you've all seen the cars in the parking lots and so on and so forth. And as Maria mentioned, about $86,000 in March. So that's not too far off of our annual budgeted amount, so we're doing pretty well there. There's some, a few big single-time things that happened in Q1. So if you're looking at what happened in Q1 and trying to figure out what's going on with the rest of the year, there's some things you need to keep in mind. One of those big ones is $160,000 for risk management insurance premiums. That's just done once a year in January. So that kind of skews our expenses to being higher in Q1 versus the rest of the year. Some of the Cressa radio maintenance, that's another big one that just happened. And then as far as the property taxes, those kind of come in at two lump sums, I think one in April and one in October. So you don't really see very smooth revenue throughout the year with those either. And then another highlight is the revenues from impact fees and pretty much anything related to all of the construction that's going on has been a little bit better than expected, so we seem to be doing pretty well there. So I have the kind of split up by fund, and the general fund is the big one, so I have that one split up by department. So I'm going to start going through the general fund, starting out with the revenue. So property taxes, as I mentioned, you know, those aren't exactly smooth throughout the year, but we have a pretty good guess of what that's going to be from the county assessor. Utility excise taxes, we're going to be, we this, you'll see note two says these solid waste and recycling services are effective for one. That's actually correct. We're just starting to collect the money in April. I think those were effective a couple of months ago. So we'll start to see it a bit more money from that as well, but we seem to be pretty close to what our budgeted revenue was going to be there. You'll see our retail sales and use taxes are significantly higher than what we had budgeted so far. As you just saw in Maria's report, we got like $65,000 this year compared to about 30 last year. And a lot of this has to do with the construction of the middle school. There's just a lot of money moving around with all that going on, so there's more money coming in. To criminal justice, it's a pretty small, and we already discussed the gambling taxes a bit. Licenses and permits going pretty well. I guess I'm not going to go through every single line on this. Otherwise, we're going to be here all night, so I'll just kind of hit some of the highlights, I suppose. These intergov revenues, that's something that might not be obvious to everybody else, but what that is is money from other government entities. So a lot of that that's coming in is grants, and the COVID grants are the big, the big line item in that one so far this year. Moving on to the finance department, this one is not a whole lot to it other than the salaries and the services. There were, and as you can see, they're not exactly right on budget for the year, but overall, we should be a little under budget with our expenses. And there haven't been any capital expenditures yet. That's, we kind of put that in the budget for it, as-needed type of thing for the finance department, and we haven't really needed any new computers yet. And once again, I'd just like to reiterate that, you know, this Q1 annualization, you're probably not going to see it right on the number when we get down to December 31st. This is kind of our best estimate so far, so some things will be a bit in flux throughout the year. Onto the legislative department. You know, the culture and recreation said zero for the year, but a lot of that is going to be through the, you know, the activities that happen during the summer. So a zero this far into the year isn't that unexpected. The services, that seems to be a bit over so far, and I think that has to do with with a consultant report that was a little expensive that came out, I think, January, where I think that had to do with the police commission. General Government Department, for those that don't know, this is kind of a new department. This is a bit of a mishmash between some accounts that were previously in the police department or the finance department. So there's not a whole lot going on with this one, but we seem to be pretty close to our original budget. The police department, the salaries and benefits are a bit in flux going throughout the year. As we all know, there have been some resignations. Excuse me, and along with those will come in payouts for, you know, accrued vacations and things like that, so that the salary and benefits here might not be the smoothest going throughout the year. But, you know, we are doing our best to annualize these things. The capital expenditures, there haven't been that much this year. I think they bought some, or some defibrillators, and I think that's the only one that's gone through so far. And you'll see that as a fairly common theme going through this is a lot of the capital expenditures haven't been made so far this year. Part of that is a little bit of, you know, uncertainty towards revenues and with the whole COVID and everything. But for the most part, these should be going along as budgeted. The Planning and Community Development Department, this one is also nothing that really stands out as one way or the other over budget or under budget. The Public Works Department, overall, in total, we're doing pretty well here. As you can see, there are some things that are, where it looks like we're over on salaries but under on services. I think I actually may have put a, put one of our people in here as salaries instead of services. So that could be an error on my part, and I apologize for that. But it kind of nets out to being pretty much on track so far. All right, so on to, that's the total for the general fund, and I should have said this is the beginning. I probably should have put this in there as well. The total of all these departments' expenditures for the year so far is about $1.1 million, and our total revenue for the year is pretty close to that. I think we've got a, the grand total net difference is, where are my notes here? About $27,000 expenses over revenue so far in a general fund, but we are projected to have a overall positive on the year. We're not going to have a deficit. Surplus, that's the word I'm looking for. Surplus, not a deficit on the year so far with the general fund. Onto the reserve fund, as you'll see, there wasn't anything budgeted in this one. This is a fund that, in theory, we don't really want to use. You know, this is if if our expenses go over something, we need to really dig it here to cover expenses. So we didn't think we were going to need to this year. Sure enough, we haven't. Still, I think that's really in here, this miscellaneous income and operating expenses. That's just interest income based on the cash balances that we have in this reserve fund. That's just interest income based on the cash balances that we have in this reserve fund and some minor bank fees that go along with that. The impact fees, this is the one that looks the best, I would say. From how we're doing, this, a lot of this has to do with all the construction that's been going through. The single family homes in particular, we've had quite a few of. So if you look at this charges for goods and services, we are, the annualization has made over our predicted revenues from the year. And I did speak with Sarah down in the department and she said that that looks pretty close to what we're expecting. You know, there's, we've just been seeing a tremendous amount of growth. Whether or not that's something that is sustainable long term, if we can count on all these revenues year after year, that's another question, but we're doing great this year. This miscellaneous, that's just interest income again. The school impact fees, those are a little under our annualized budget, but that's pretty much what goes in, comes right back out. And the school impact fees line down here. So whether those are over or under budget, it's going to be essentially a net zero. And for those that don't know, the impact fees are user fees that are assessed for usually for new construction that go for helping out our parks, helping out, you know, sewer and stormwater, traffic, things like that. So next, I just put the capital projects and equipment summary straight from the original budget in here. And the reason I did that is because you're about to see a whole lot of funds with zeros in their capital expenditure line so far. And if you're kind of wondering what projects line up with those, this is going to be a good reference for you. And that, you know, a lot of these projects are still planning on going forward. We just haven't necessarily started in on them too deeply yet. So into the capital projects fund, the taxes that are coming in here. These are, check my notes here. This is the real estate excise tax or REIT. And so it looks like we're significantly over what we had budgeted. And a lot of this just has to do with the real estate sales, you know, there's just been a whole lot of real estate dealings going on in the city. So those are looking good for the year. This intergovernmental line, these are grants that we receive that have to do with our capital projects that we're spending on. So we haven't gotten a lot this year because we haven't made the expenditures yet. But we are still planning on receiving these funds. There really hasn't been much that's changed in that with the exception of extra grants. So more money coming in. We're expecting to get another one point two million grant for the TDS building and a half a million dollars for the community center as well. Whether or not those come this year, I'm not positive. But more grants coming in and I think we're still on budget there. And you'll see there's very little in the actual for Q1 capital expenditures. Again, we just haven't really dug into these projects yet. The vehicle and equipment fund, this is a fund we set up to, you know, replace the vehicles as they, their life expires. So the only thing that was in the budget this year was to sell one car and purchase another. That hasn't happened yet. So we've got nothing in the Q1 actual thus far, but as far as I know, that is still on the plan. So that's what the Q1 annualization is. Onto the sewer fund, this is one where this is budgeter's dream. It's a really nice, easy one to try to guess the revenues on because it's a flat amount and we more or less know how many people are here. So if you look at our charges for goods and services, those are pretty much right on the money. The intergovernmental, that's, you know, charging other municipalities for their services, like BioSolid from Clava or from LMA. Excuse me. And then the miscellaneous is again, just interest income. The operating expenditures, those are a little bit higher so, so far this year. Part of that is again, because of that AWC risk insurance premium. And there's been just a couple of other things, but overall, we should be not too far off on the year on this one. And then these transfers out that you see down here, there was four hundred thousand dollars that is transferred to the general fund. And that is to cover loans from the sewer fund that have happened over the last ten years or so. Those are constantly being repaid back every year. And then a hundred thousand dollars is going to go to the sewer fund capital fund that hasn't been done yet, but is still projected to be. All right. So the capital sewer fund, so pretty much the only thing that's really budgeted on this was the hundred thousand dollars that's going to be coming in. Still planning on making that transfer. And then there's some, some capital expenditures that again, haven't gone into those capital projects yet. But general sewer plant update, actuator on the central road, these are all in that capital project summary. The sewer fund debt service fund, so this fund was set up to pay off the public works loan that was taken out to, for the whole sewer project a number of years back. There's about a one point nine million dollars left on that loan. And so we're paying off two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. That hasn't happened yet. That, that payment comes due in July. And these charges for goods and services, those are, excuse me, sewer development charges. And over our, over our projected annual budget, again, just due to all of the construction that's been going on. And then finally, the stormwater utility fund, a little bit over our projections for the year. There are some people that will pay their entire ballots upfront for the year. So that kind of will make the income not as smooth throughout the year. But for the most part, we're pretty close to our budget there. And there haven't been a whole lot of operating expenses yet. I know when I was looking back, I think at the planning, I was speaking to Matt and he said that they were expecting to have some of their guys charge more of their time to the stormwater utility later on in the year. So that could go up a little bit from there. So overall, we are doing a little bit better than our predicted revenues and a little bit under on our predicted expenses. But again, it's only Q1, there's a whole lot of year to, still to go, never know what's going to happen. But that's what I've got so far. If anybody has any questions, let me know. If I can't answer tonight, I can look them up for you.
Hi Riley, this is Doug. I'd like to offer a comment. This is excellent. I like your report. You're right. I have not seen one quite like this. But I like this and I appreciate the footnotes and the comments. And it's very thorough. I'm very pleased to see this. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard Riley, and thank you very much for the report. It's very good.
Thank you.
All right, this is Randy, that's, is excellent. And it's nice that you point out the, the large deltas and explain them. You know, I've seen a lot of reports over the years, little, little differences don't really matter that much. But it's when we see a big swing, why is it there? And it's nice that you had the answer ahead of time and presented it. That's very helpful. It makes the report go a lot, the reporting now go a lot smoother. Thank you again.
Thank you also for a great report. I was looking forward to it. I knew that based on information I received from Maria, that you were working on a new version to present to us. And I'm very pleased with, with the report. And I think as Randy pointed out, the footnotes as such are very helpful. Takes a lot of guesswork out of, because you could pretty much anticipate. You're in it every day. You can anticipate kind of questions we might have. So I appreciate that you've gone that extra mile there to make that, help us clarify that for us. Thank you.
All right. Great, everybody.
Mayor. Before we move on, can I please read one more public comment?
Absolutely.
Okay, we have received a public comment from Amy Dustin at twenty three twenty East Seventh Circle. Amy said hello. I would like this to be read at the four twenty eight twenty one meeting. In examining last month's checks payable, who are Exegy LLC and Sound Employment Solutions? Why are we spending over fifteen percent of our town's money out of town? If we have such a budgetary shortage, bring the jobs and services local. Why is the council and mayor going forward with putting a traffic light on Fourth Ivy and Highland? The majority of citizens do not want a light and it will make congestion worse. If it's budgetary reasons, why not explore a simple four way stop sign until funds can be appropriated for a roundabout? Please listen to the citizens of this town. La Center is rapidly losing our police department. Many citizens have moved here because of our safe, quiet town. We all need to show support to our officers, hire more police officers before our safety is sacrificed. Outsourcing to the county is not the same as having our own agency. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. Okay, again, I just would like to thank Riley for his report this evening. Very well done Riley. And Maria, thank you for your report as well. We'll continue to move on. Next this evening, we have the community development staff report, our contract community development contractor, Mr. Jeff Swanson will be presenting this evening. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Good evening, everybody. I think what I'd like to do tonight is before I get into the project list, give you a legislative report. So Jessica, I wonder if you can be the presenter? Thank you. And just by way of background, for those listening, every year, this city prepares an annual legislative agenda that we present to our state and federal delegation. This includes different policy issues that cities face as well as some capital projects that are of interest and need within the city. Last week, the Washington State Legislature approved the capital budget. And there are four projects on here that I would like to highlight, all of which appeared on the city's legislative agenda. So the first two I want to talk about are La Center projects specifically. The first is the La Center City Hall improvements. And the city requested one million, two hundred thousand dollars and was appropriated one million, two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars to do the tenant improvements to the TDS buildings. So this relieves a local burden that we were facing to fund that. It will now be funded by the state. The second project is the La Center Community Center repairs and improvements. We requested five hundred thousand dollars and were awarded five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars by the legislature. And the scope of this project includes some deferred maintenance needs to the parking lot as well as some improvements and renovations to the commercial kitchen, appliance replacement, a new hood and ventilation system and some other updates that'll make the commercial kitchen safer to operate and more efficient. And especially for our Meals on Wheels partner that operates out of there, serving a large number of constituents and citizens in North Clark County. The other two projects that were awarded funding and appeared on our legislative agenda, our regional projects. The Porter Ridgefield's IT Three Discovery Center was appropriated one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this is a facility that will do job and skills training. And after many years of requesting capital funds for the Clark College North County Satellite Campus on the east side of the Ridgefield Junction, fifty three million, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars were appropriated for that project. So that will bring higher education services to the entire Discovery Corridor region of North Clark County. So that's a really exciting one as well. Other appropriations requests that we prepared included three transportation projects. First priority being the East Fourth Breezy Creek Culvert Replacement and Fourth Street Widening to improve the, the quality of that facility, adding bike lanes and sidewalks and curb and gutter and so forth, making it a complete streets facility. For that, we requested ten point five million to fund the remaining amount needed to construct the project. We also requested three million dollars to do the design engineering and permitting for Northwest Pacific Highway, basically from West Tenth out to the city limits towards Bolin. And the idea there is to design a facility that accommodates all modes, pedestrian, bicycle, and improves mobility of motor vehicles through that area and, and safety. The third one is the repairs to Aspen and West Tenth related to heavy truck traffic that has been routed through the town for a number of years. And this is because the northbound I five bridge on the east fork of the Lewis River is currently weight limited until it receives some funding and is repaired. But all the truck traffic over the years has caused some damage and there is otherwise no option but to make a request of this sort, to get some compensation for the, the damage shifted from the state and federal system onto the local system. And for that, we requested two and a half million dollars. So the status of the transportation budget, they have concluded the legislative session. And the chairs of the transportation committees in both the House and the Senate under the leadership of Senator Steve Hobbs and Senator Curtis King, so bipartisan effort, are going to conduct a series of listening sessions over the summer months with the intent to bring the legislature into a special session in September, October, to specifically address transportation. And so it's at that time that we'll have more certainty around funding for our transportation related projects from the state level. In the meantime, we've submitted appropriations requests through Representative Herrera Butler's office and Senator Patty Murray's office. Both of their staff teams are coordinating earmark and appropriation requests for various federal funding programs. And so we have potentially some opportunity to receive federal, federal funds to fund these remaining capital projects on our list. I want to just remark that it's a testament, these awards to the city are a testament to the team of folks that have been working at the city. Mayor Thornton, U City Council members and Lloyd Halverson, who have tirelessly advocated for these projects and priorities. And so I want to express appreciation for your efforts advocating with our legislators. Any questions about the legislative reports?
I just want to give you a big cheer, Jeff, actually. There's some good wins there.
Yeah, absolutely. Good job. All the hard work you guys have done on this. Absolutely excellent. And it'll be nice improvements for the city of La Center, especially the community center, because everybody can use that. And having all of our functions combined in this new city hall building, which has long been awaited and it's an excellent, excellent project force. Sorry about dog marks.
Yeah, Jeff, again, thank you for a great report. Looking forward to moving ahead with the, the TDS building here, hopefully with those funds coming in and not having to take the funds out of our, out of our existing funds to accommodate those changes. And then freeing up the opportunity to lease out the buildings that we move out of so we can consolidate. I think that's, that's going to be a win-win there for the city. So again, thanks for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Council.
Jeff, I'd also like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I would like to recognize our legislative delegation. Senator Ann Rivers has worked tirelessly on getting these projects approved for her district along with Representative Hoff and Representative Vic. They've been an absolute pleasure to work with. They've worked, like I say, tirelessly to get this done. And Jeff, I would just like to recognize all your hard work and efforts for preparing these grants to begin with. And then shepherding through the, the process and all the bureaucracy that needs to be done to get these things accomplished. Working with the staff of each one of those legislators and all your hard work and efforts. It's, it is exciting to get these grants. The city is excited to move forward with the projects, and we continue to look, we look forward to continue the process and working on future grants as well. So, great job. This is excellent news. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. It's a great team between our legislators and the city. And what a relief to get some help with these large, one-time capital expenses.
Absolutely. And I also would like to recognize Lloyd Halverson. He's been just a wonderful individual to work with, and he's a strong advocate for our community, and has done some great things for us. So kudos to the team. It's been a lot of work, but we're getting it done. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to say too, I'd like to thank you for bringing the right team of consultants together. It would be hard to find an employee to do this kind of work, and you've got the right consultants doing this. And anyway, I'd like to thank you as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, I'd like to do that remark. Yes, thank you.
All right, well, I'll move on to the monthly project update for community development, and then taking questions on that. So the first project I want to talk about, maybe we can pull the map up. Thank you. Project number one, which is the Hung Lockwood Annexation, which is a 20-acre parcel across from where the new middle school is being constructed. And at the last city council meeting, the 60% petition to annex was approved by the city council. And so we're now working with the State Office of Financial Management to get the annexation certified and finalized. Heritage Center Building B, that's project number two. A conditional use permit was approved by the city's hearings examiner on April 6th. And this is for Teresa's Little School for that use on that property. On project number three, which is the La Center Middle School, the applicant, this ESD112, who's the owner's rep for the school district, filed a sign permit with the city for an electronic message center type of a sign that you would typically see in front of a school on March 22nd. It's unusual to find a school that has underlying zoning of some sort of residential use, because for a variety of reasons. One is because residential land, you want to have developed as residential land in your comp plan so that you have enough housing for the population growth. And and because it also creates some limitations with respect to the site specifically and what you can do, because there are things in residential zones that generally are not allowed. So what we're doing is we're working with the school, with the superintendent, to do a zoning code text amendment to allow this type of sign for schools and public facilities. And so Ethan Spoo will be working with the planning commission and with you all on getting the text amendment done. And then when we do our annual comp plan updates, we will, we'll make a comp plan change, a zone change for that property. So it'll have the same underlying zoning as other school properties. The other issues we're working through pertain to trees on the property and a few other miscellaneous things. We'll have a sewer pump station starting up, of course, later in the summer. And our city engineer, Tony Cooper, and our public works director, Matt Jenkins, are working really closely with the school district to see that that goes smoothly. And so we can assist them with a successful opening of that very large project. Next project is the Schwartz B&amp;B. That's number five. And constructing, construction of that building is complete. Number eight, Heritage Country Estates, there was a boundary line adjustment done for lots 101 and 102. It was filed February 24th, and it was approved on the 14th of April. Highland Terrace, that's number nine. A tree cutting permit was filed April 16th and is currently under review by the city. On number 11, Case Place Subdivision, they filed for a post-decision review for off-site wetland mitigation on April 19th, and that's currently being reviewed. Riverside Estates, number 12, at this point in Phase 1, 72 single-family residences have been given occupancy. And a critical areas permit and slight site plan review as of April 21st is near issuance, pending resolution of some conditions of approval. And we anticipate amending the development agreement regarding that development on May 12th. So that would be something that will be brought forward to council. We still have a couple of critical things we need to get done in order to keep on that schedule. So it could push to the second meeting in May. But at this point, I think we feel mostly optimistic that we'll get those things done by the end of the week so that the hearing can be properly noticed. On project number 18, our city engineer is with us this evening. And so in a few minutes, he'll present a report, but bids were opened on that project. That's the new city hall on April 20th. Couple other notes here, the Shoreline Master Program. There was a city council hearing is scheduled for that on May 11th. And so there will be a staff presentation and then a public hearing on the Shoreline Master Program. The fee schedule was updated for the building fees on April 14th, your last meeting. So that's all of the project-related reports that I have this evening for the department. Are there any questions?
Jeff, this is Randy. I got a couple. On Heritage, project number two, what's going on on the east side on that upper level? Not the main building. Maybe Tony will have to answer it.
Yeah, so they have a couple of different things going on. They have some tenants in the building. Teresa's Little School is going to move over to Building B from Building A. And I believe the space Teresa's Little School was occupying, that somebody's going to be moving in there as well. So they have some kind of tenant shuffling things going on. The issue specific to this report is that the Teresa's Little School in that zone is a conditional use, and so had to go through a type 3 approval process before the hearings examiner. But it has been approved, and they're able to proceed pending, you know, a couple of other things that need to be satisfied on the site.
Well, specifically what I was asking about, there's another building pad to the east of the main building. What's that?
Oh, I don't know. Maybe, Tony, do you happen to know?
East of the main building?
I think it's east up the street. If I was standing at the Chevron Station looking at the new building, it would be off to the right. I just was in there getting a haircut today, and I noticed there's something else being built. There was a house there that was torn down.
Oh, that's a parking lot for the Heritage Building.
Oh, that's just gonna be parking? Okay.
Yeah, that's just their parking lot. They've got, I think they've got curb in there now. And they're grading it, but that's the parking lot for the Heritage Building B.
Okay, great. And Jeff, my other question is minute management number four, can you give us an update on that with what's going on with them?
I think the latest we have from them, and Tony, maybe you can jump in here too. I think we're waiting for them to submit some plans or revisions in response to comments that the city has provided them, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that's correct. They're waiting for final site, they have to submit for final site plan approval on it. There's some outstanding items that they have to, they have to submit. They haven't submitted yet. So we're just waiting for those plans. And they're, I think they're ready to submit them pretty soon. But at least that's the emails that it looks like have been going around. They're planning to submit the final site plan review so they can get their building permit, I think, for the hotel.
Okay, well, I'm getting, I've got some people asking, you know, citizens asking what's going on up there. I mean, can you give a, just a 50,000-foot overview of what they're doing or what they want to do up there without getting into too many details, or is that not possible at this time?
No, so they have received approval from the hearings examiner on, on four different things they want to do on the property. And I believe the first thing they're going to do is the hotel. So it's about 100-room, 105-room hotel. And then they've got three other pads that'll be constructed. One for a convenience store, one for a drive-through restaurant, and one for a single-level, multi-tenant retail space. So sort of spec retail construction that they will lease out. But I believe that the first thing they're going to do is build a hotel.
Will they be taking down the Shell Station?
Right, so the hotel is on the back part of the property, and so they will be taking down the Shell Station. Probably not when they're doing the hotel, but when they develop the front part of the property where the Shell Station sits now. They plan to replace the convenience store and put in another, another gas station. And yeah, so I think at that time, that's when the existing convenience store and station will undergo demolition.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Jeff, this is Dennis. Regarding the Schwartz B&amp;B, it looks, it looks like someone has moved into that, into that home. Is that a fact?
I, I'm not personally aware if someone has. They may have gotten an occupancy permit or certificate of occupancy, you know, here very recently. And they, they could be moving in. It's possible, yeah.
Can they have, can they have full-time residents in there then?
Yeah, I mean, the nature of a bed and breakfast is it's operated by the occupant.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff this evening before we move on?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Yep, good report, Jeff. Again, I appreciate all your hard work and all your efforts. And I always introduce you as the Contract Community Development Director, but your consulting firm is Exegy Consulting, and I will, I'll begin to use that as well. So again, I appreciate all your, all your hard work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next staff report we have will be from our city engineer, Mr. Tony Cooper. And he'll be standing on the award for the remodel of the new city hall. I'm gonna quit calling it the TDS building.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So I won't go into too much background since that's really been discussed. Although the city did budget, in the 2021 budget, for $1.2 million to remodel this building, and it will house all administrative functions, city functions, providing enhanced efficiencies and a higher customer service. So on March 16th, 2021, the project plans and the contract were advertised in the Colombian. The plans and contract were hosted on J2 Blueprinting website for contracts to download, as well as posted on the city website. So on April 20th, bids were opened and three bids were received. The base bid for the low bidder, Swinerton, is $1,097,102. And the alternate bid is $224,373, for a total bid amount equal to $1,321,475. Now, as you know, the alternate bid consists of installing the vestibule at the entrance of the building. So the, the sales tax will also be added to this, for the materials purchased by the contractor. The sales task, tax, tax will be added when the contractor submits monthly materials purchased by the contractor. So the sales will be, like I say, monthly. And the sale, the estimated sales tax at 8.4% for the total cost of the bid would be $111,000. However, only the materials will be paid, and so it'll be actually less than that $111,000. What that is, I couldn't tell you, but, but it'll be less than that, the actual materials that they submit for purchasing. The city recommends that the base bid and alternate bid be ordered to Swinerton in the amount of $1,321,475 plus sales tax. So the contract states that there, there are 120 working days. So once the contract is awarded, a contract, bonds, and insurance will need to be initiated prior to the contractor beginning work. It is reasonable to assume that the contractor may start in the middle of May following all the approval. And adding 120 working days to that, the work will be completed sometime in the middle of November. So this allows approximately a month and a half of the city to move all the office items and all the, move into the city hall building before the end of 2021. Johansson Wing Architects, who prepared the plans and specifications, will review the contractor's submittals and pay estimates for the contract with them. I've attached the bid tab that we got. And so the total budget for this project is $1,321,475. However, with this grant subtracted to it, the cost will likely be only $121,000 plus sales tax. So I, like I say, I've attached the bid tab. Does anybody have any questions on it? Any council members?
Tony, this is Randy. I agree with the staff recommendations on, on the vestibule being done, because we need to fix that entrance, and doing it later will only, only just make a mess of things. And, you know, it's best to get it over with and done now. And I gotta say, getting that grant definitely takes the pain out of this. It looked like it would be something we would need to delay even farther. But now that we have the money coming in to pay for the lion's share of this contract, I think this is great. Again, Jeff's team, then the mayor's choice of consultants here, I think we're doing the right thing moving ahead with this.
Tony, this is Doug. I originally had reservations about the vestibule, primarily for financial reasons. But now that we've got the good news about the, about the grant from Olympia, I think we should go, we should move ahead with this, with this project, including the vestibule.
This is Dennis.
Yeah, I have to agree. I have to agree with you. Both you guys on that one. I was extremely hesitant, as you already knew, about this going forward with everything that's going on in the city right now. But with the news that came in tonight, I think this is the right time, and the price is right. So I have to agree.
Good job on that, Tony. And again, I agree also, this is the right move here. And I see the motion, so you're really suggesting that when the motion is made, that in addition to the $1,321,475, that we include language that indicates that there'll be a sales tax on top of that, correct?
Yes, it's already in the contract that the city has to pay the contractor for that sales tax. So just add it on there. But again, it's, it'll be less than $111,000. But I couldn't tell you exactly what, but it'll be plus that, that whatever sales tax they purchase for things.
Right, right. Well, again, thank you and your team. Great job. Thank you.
Hey, Tony, this, this is a prevailing wage job, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Well, that, yeah, that drives up the price quite a bit too. So again, thank you.
Tony, great report. Once again, thank you for being so thorough. I concur with the thoughts that have been shared by council. So if it's okay with everyone, I would like to make a motion to I would like to make a motion to. Uh, for us to move to award the bid to Swinerton in the amount of one million three hundred and twenty one thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars. To complete the city hall building remodel project.
My second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to award the bid to Swinerton, Swinerton Construction, the amount of one million three hundred and twenty one thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars. For the remodel of the uh new city hall. Uh, clerk, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Council member Boss.
Aye.
Council member Williams.
Yes.
Council member Strobin.
Yes.
Council member Servini.
Yes.
Council member Hill.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council, and thank you, Tony. Great presentation. I appreciate all your hard work. I'm excited to get started on it.
Yeah, thank you.
So next on the agenda, um, we have a uh presentation again from Mr. Swanson. Uh, the. Presentation this evening will be for the uh planned action area for the uh historic downtown center and Timmin Road. Council, you may remember that this was a project that we contemplated back in two thousand and twenty, uh, prior to COVID. And as a result of COVID, we removed it from the capital projects list, um, or postponed it. And uh, I think it was two months back, uh, the city council requested that we bring this project back forward for reconsideration. So uh Jeff will be doing a presentation on that this evening. Jeff?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, it occurs to me, uh, I I want to just make a comment about. How these projects are funded and and the difference between ongoing operations and revenue of the city and one time revenue. Um, these private, these funds coming from the state are specific to certain projects. They're one time funds. Uh, for a one time request. The state doesn't offer any sort of uh funding. For things like general fund services that municipalities provide. So I just want to make sure it's understood that, you know, when we get one point two million dollars for the new city hall and five hundred thousand for the community center. Those don't, uh, you couldn't otherwise be used to shore up budget deficits. Or address shortfalls in general fund services. They're specific to capital projects and capital requests. That uh serve the the needs of the public in terms of those facilities. And so I have yet another uh one time budget request. This will actually be a a two time budget request because we do an annual budgeting cycle. And this is a a project that's going to require about two years of effort. And this is the historic town center, Timmin Landing Planned Action Area. And uh, so if we can go to the next slide. Uh, and I know you've all heard this before, but I want to just do a little refresh on what this is. So what is a planned action area? A planned action is a development project whose impacts have been addressed by an environmental impact statement or EIS. Associated with a plan for a specific geographic area before individual projects are proposed. And this, uh, the source for this is MRSC. So what this means is the municipality does the environmental work upfront. Within this, the uh set of certain uses or zoning regulations. So uh, in the next slide. Uh, basically, to do a planned action area, you do a sub area plan, so you identify a geographic area. And you identify what uses are going to be allowed in that geographic area, and they can't be too wildly different. You can't have like, oh, we're gonna have, you know, a school and a coal fire power plant and uh, you know, shopping mall. All within a three block radius of each other because those are very conflicting uses. And to do environmental impacts on that, it's just too disparate. So you you zero in on uh a town center type of style of use. Uh, some commercial, some office, some mixed use. And uh, and then you do the environmental analysis before someone comes in and submits for a project. So you do the sub area plan, you do a SEPA review, and you do an environmental impact statement. What that allows you to do and why you would want to do this, and if we can go to the next slide. The first thing is, is it allows the community to identify a specific vision for that place. And to determine what they want to see there. There's a lot of public involvement uh that goes into a planned action area. And the second is because it reduces the barriers to development and redevelopment in certain areas. So when someone is looking at a site, they have to negotiate the acquisition of the property. They need to do property due diligence. They need to put plans together and submit to the jurisdiction. They have to do their own environmental impact analysis. And so all of this is expensive and takes a lot of time to do. Uh, and if you're the person that wants to do that project, you've got money that you're paying interest on to your financial institution. Or you have opportunity cost if that's money you already have in hand. And it's a long time before you can even turn a shovel full of dirt and start going vertical. And then you have the construction period and then finding somebody to occupy it and generating some lease revenue. So this. Advances that, it puts the jurisdiction in a place where you're more attractive to that private investment. Because they can get through a process a lot quicker. So it increases the certainty around the land use outcomes. It reduces the development timelines by expediting this project review. And it eliminates the expense for individual projects of preparing an environmental impact statement. So if we go on to the next slide here, there are three examples I provided, and there are multiple around um the state of Washington. But specifically in our area, the city Washougal uh has done a rezone. And they've done a uh, a planned action area for their town center. Uh, city of Pualip did a a downtown planned action area. And uh, the city of Vancouver Heights District Subarea Plan is another example of this. So in the next slide. You can see the Pualip example. Um, where they have done the planned action SEPA area, have they have their study area for the environmental impact statement. So this shows uh down below, you can see the uh zoning that they've applied within that bold black boundary. And then uh, the next example is a very local one, which is the city of Vancouver's Heights District Plan. And so you can see the before and what the after will look like. And I know they've been going through some changes based on public input to that Heights District Plan. They're uh, they're being responsive to some of the concerns of the community in terms of traffic and uh density and so on. So as they go through the process, they'll make some, some changes. So the next uh slide, how much and how long? Um, we're using for comparison, the city of Washougal's project, which is expected to cost in total between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars. So what we're recommending for appropriations is two hundred and fifty thousand for two thousand twenty one. And we'll get an RFP out and. Use as much of that this year as we can. We need to, may need to push some of that into two thousand twenty two. And similarly for two thousand twenty two, may need to push a little bit into two thousand twenty three. So it's essentially about a two year project. Any, are there any questions about this?
Jeff, what's the average time from the time that you do a study, not not this, if you were a contractor or somebody that comes in? What's the average time it takes to start the process themselves all the way to the point of uh occupancy? Is it one, two, three years?
It, it of course depends on the scope of what they want to do. But uh, you know, for example, manage, minute management has been in the process for two years. Where they've been going through land use approvals and putting plans together and looking at the environmental impacts and proceeding towards. Getting um permission to proceed. So, and they still haven't broken ground.
And so if this would have been done already up there by the city, how much time would that cut off? Using them as an example.
Yeah, so all else equal, I would say it would, the um, timing related specifically to environmental impacts. Um, probably like nine months. Six to twelve months, so we'll say nine on average.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Hi, Jeff, Doug here. Um, would our planning commission get involved in any way with with this kind of a project?
This will be a heavy lift for the planning commission. They'll be very much involved, um, as will the council. The council will receive updates and so forth. Um, and it'll be a heavy lift for the community. Uh, frankly, the, so we'll put out an RFP and the public involvement piece, the consultant will, you know, be. Getting into everybody's face at community events and asking them to complete surveys and to tell us, you know, some of the amenities and things they want to see in the town. Over the company in the future. Um, so yeah, it's, it's a big deal for a community to do this. Uh, but it's had such a tremendous impact on the future of the community.
Okay, thank, thank you.
And okay, so not seeing no other questions, I think what we're looking for this evening is a uh motion and voice vote for. To authorize city staff to proceed with the historic town center and Timmin Landing Subarea Plan and Plankback Canary Project. And to proceed with issuing a request for proposals with the, um, you know, over one point seven million in grant funds coming into the city. Um, we will stay uh under the appropriation given by council and the budget. Um, as we add this project, so there, there won't be a need to increase the budget appropriation to um, to do this project. If that makes sense.
Yeah, uh, it makes sense. I just uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now when we're. We've got a few other things around the table, so it kind of, it adds to the reservation from my side. Uh, I'm not sure how the other council members stand, but. And it it's, you know, and I know it comes out of different funds and such, I do understand all that. Uh, it's still also puts out there, hey, we're gonna spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this right now. Uh, when we're in the middle of some other things, so. I I'd love to hear feedback from the other counselors.
Jeff, you said, uh, this Randy, you said there was uh one point seven million coming in. Uh, we have the money for the community center. We have the money for the TD, uh, the city hall. This two fifty isn't covered, though, or unless I'm incorrect here.
So the, the two fifty was not included in the two thousand twenty one budget. Neither was the community center. Uh, so the community center is something, you know, well, what we'll need to do is probably do a budget amendment that would recognize receipt. From the state of the one point seven million. And um. So the the delta is with the one point two that has been budgeted for the city hall project. Um, you will not expend the one point two from your own funds. You'll receive that amount through the state and expend those funds. Um, so e- essentially, you'll have money in the capital projects fund that's been appropriated for two thousand twenty one. That will otherwise go unspent.
Uh, let, let me say, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm against the project. The project is definitely something Doug and I have been adamant for since, well, for a long time now. I'm just thinking the timing i- isn't right. That's all I'm saying.
Mayor, this is Dennis. I think that uh, with the fact of uh. Getting the uh, the one point two million uh grant. Uh, says that we're gonna basically save out of our existing budget, uh, something close to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that's already been budgeted for this year. That we, uh, that's available, so uh, if we could take two hundred and fifty out of that and put it towards our future. For our citizens and the future development in our city, uh, I would be in favor of 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 moving forward with this two fifty for two thousand twenty one. Uh, particularly because we've got, uh, we've saved ourselves uh, about seven hundred and fifty thousand based on the uh. The grant that we received, so uh, if, I think it'd be different story, different discussion if we hadn't uh, had not received that grant. So I'm uh, I'm in favor of us moving forward.
This is Doug, you know, we we frequently talk about the need to bring new business into the center. And we have to plan for that. And. I'm gonna sound like a broken record here, but I say this frequently, that we have competitors here in 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 North Clark County. You know, we have Ridgefield and Wilton and Battleground and others, and we need to prepare ourselves and entice new business to come into our community. And if it means saving six months or nine months or twelve months, and to have a competitive advantage over another community, I think we need to pursue this.
I agree, and Doug, this, taking this action is something that that positions the center with potential developers and builders. Um, very seriously, and finally gets us on the same page and the same footing as Ridgefield and some of our neighboring cities. So, you know, for us to continue pushing this out further and further only keeps us that much further behind in terms of making. Um, our, our presence more well known to the business industry. And what we are willing to do upfront to help them in their process. So uh, I I have some real hesitancy and concern with us, um, not pushing this forward right now. I think timing is critical, and I don't think, uh, you know, we we could have a better outcome. Uh, with the grants and the funding that we've received, it positions us very well to make this investment for the community. And for the long term benefit of the citizens.
I would have to second Liz's comments uh completely. Thank you, Liz.
So with that, I would like to make a motion for us to proceed with the um, the center downtown um, sub area plan. Or downtown and Timmin Landing uh Subarea Plan. As presented.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the appropriation for the um, the center downtown, historic downtown area and Timmin Road. Planned action area as. Uh, clerk, could I get a roll call vote on this, please?
Council member Boss.
Aye.
Council member Williams.
Yes.
Council member Strobin.
No.
Council member Servini.
Yes.
Council member Hill.
Yes.
The motion is approved, uh, with four in favor and one opposed. Thank you, council. Thank you, Jeff, for the presentation. Um, again, appreciate all the hard work. So it's right now twenty minutes after eight. We're going a little bit long. We have one more presentation this evening. I'm not exactly sure how long that's gonna take. So I would like to just um, take a five minute recess, uh, and if we could please uh. Everybody be back at eight twenty five and we'll continue on with the final staff report from uh Ethan School. Five minute break. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, um, I see all the city council members have returned. Um. Council member Strobin, uh, you don't have your video on, are you, have you returned?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Very good. So we we will resume the meeting. We do have one additional presentation this evening. It's actually an ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero four. It'll be Title eighteen Density Code Update. And the city contract planner will be presenting Mr. Ethan Spool. Ethan?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, council. Have another set of code amendments we're presenting to you tonight. The difference tonight in some of the code amendments that we're talking about or in the code amendment that we're talking about tonight versus some of the ones we've spoken to you about in the past is that as opposed to having all new code, like we talked about with you for the accessory dwelling unit code or the cottage housing code. This is really amending the existing code to correct conflicts. And specifically correct conflicts in how the code discusses residential density. So there's a number of exhibits attached to the ordinance tonight because correcting these conflicts required us to jump into quite a few different code sections and make them consistent. So the project came about over the last couple of years as planning and community development and public work staff have been working with applicants and have noticed that the code talks about density in an inconsistent way. And so specifically there are certain sections of the code that talk about net density and other sections of the code that talk about gross density. Not sure if you know how much, how much you know about what gross density and net density are, but they're two pretty distinctly different concepts. And I've provided some information in the staff report there on your screen that you should be able to see. A table, a fairly, you know, simple table that sort of looks at a theoretical ten-acre site and calculates what the density would be under the net density approach versus the gross density approach. I won't go through that table line by line, but the net density approach allows applicants to deduct certain things like infrastructure and critical areas before they apply the unit density range for each zone to to the the remaining site area. Whereas the gross density calculation doesn't allow an applicant to take any deductions. So you just apply that density count per acre to that entire site area. So you come up with very different numbers of units required on the same site, depending on whether you're talking about net density or gross density. That the these couple of lines here show you what the differences are between that and gross. If you just deduct infrastructure and then if you take it a further step and you deduct critical areas, then the then the difference becomes even greater. So, you know, in this instance, on a ten-acre site where you would have six acres of net area after you take out infrastructure and critical areas in the LDR seven point five zone where you're supposed to have four units per minimum per net acre. You would be required to have twenty-four units. Whereas if you applied that same metric, four units per net acre to the gross area of the site, you'd have forty units. That's a difference of sixteen units. And then that's on the minimum density side. And then maximum density side is really regulated by the minimum lot size of seventy five hundred square feet in that zone. So you have a more than twenty unit, twenty-three unit difference in that case. You know, so that's just put out there for you to show kind of how important this idea is to get right and and to be consistent in the code in terms of what we're talking about, whether it's net density or or gross density. And so staff and the planning commission are recommending to you that you use net density. And in fact, the city zoning code really doesn't work any other way, even though there are some references to gross density in the code. If you were to apply the gross density calculation and and you came back up here to the forty units minimum that are required. The minimum lot size, or excuse me, the average lot size that you would have to have to meet that would be sixty five hundred square feet, which is less than the minimum lot size allowed. So what's that, that what that is telling us is that gross density really doesn't work. And if you applied that concept, the applicant would then have to ask for variances from the development code just to implement gross density. So what we've done then is we've revised these various code sections that are in front of you tonight to consistent with with that concept that I just discussed to mention net density rather than gross density. And then we've also revised some related code sections. Eighteen ten zero seventy that talks about the hierarchy of plans and regulations. And that mentions the comprehensive plan as the highest local land use regulation. There's not too many other cities that I know of that use that hierarchy system to resolve conflicts between different code sections and different documents. The reason that that's a problem, a couple of reasons actually. One is that the comprehensive plan really isn't a regulatory document. It's not meant to do that. It's it's a policy document that guides the city. And then, secondly, the comprehensive plan also talks about gross density. And we're going to be coming back to you later in the year with an amendment to the comprehensive plan to square that up with the the net density concept that we're talking about here tonight. So if that hierarchy section were to remain in place and says that the comprehensive plan is the highest local land use regulation, then gross density would still be be in place. There's a couple of other code sections that we governed, another one dealing, excuse me, that we revised, another one that governs conflicts, eighteen ten one hundred. And so that one is being kept in place of of the repeal of this section. And so conflicts will now be resolved by taking the regulation of, excuse me, using the more restrictive provision that governs if if there's a conflict. Then eighteen one thirty zero twenty, that's in the LDR seven point five zoning code. Those are the locational criteria that are in the existing code. However, if you look at them really closely, they're not actually locational criteria. One of them deals with zoning up on annexation and another one deals with the comprehensive plan map. So those have been replaced with actual locational criteria. That criterion, that's important because zone changes come before the planning commission and the city council. And the locational criteria are used to decide whether or not it's appropriate to change zones. And then the last one I just wanted to mention real quickly are the density requirements in eighteen one thirty zero eighty, which reference average lot size within ten percent of of seventy five hundred square feet. That provision conflicts with the actual minimum lot size of seventy five hundred square feet. So this averaging concept would have allowed a lot between sixty seven fifty and eighty two fifty square feet. But if you can have a lot that's sixty seven fifty square feet, that's below the minimum. So to simplify that, staff and the planning commissioner are recommending that averaging provision be removed, which just means that developers or applicants would then operate within the lot size requirements of that zone of seventy five hundred minimum to eleven thousand maximum. So that's it in a nutshell. Our recommendation then for you is up there on the screen with the proposed motion. Again, I apologize that there's so many code sections that we're talking about here, but that density concept is sprinkled throughout the code. And so we are recommending that you approve revisions to these various code sections. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, not hearing any questions. First of all, I want to thank you for your report, Ethan, very well done. And all your continued efforts in working with the planning commission to work through these or code specifically for the Title eighteen. I know there's there's still more work that needs to be done, but getting going through the process to getting all these inconsistencies corrected and chewed up, if you will. So this is a public hearing. It's right now eight thirty-five. I would like to open the public hearing up for public comment. If anyone would like to comment on this ordinance this evening, if you could please give us your name and address. And if you would limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, not seeing or hearing anyone wanting to have a public comment, I'm going to close the public hearing. Right now, eight thirty-six. Sorry, it's now eight thirty-six. I'm going to close the public comment. Turn it back over to the city council if you have any further questions or comments for Ethan this evening.
Ethan, this is Randy. I appreciate the work that you've done with the planning commission removing those ambiguities because that's always problematic when a developer or or an applicant, you know, finds inconsistencies in our in our regulations. So again, good job, thank you.
Thank you.
This is Dennis. And again, Ethan, I want to appreciate it also. Well, just a shout out to the planning commission. I know Doug and I recently here, well, at least I myself more recently been on the planning commission. And this discuss, these discussions have been going on and trying to work through it. And I know I want to throw a shout out to Dennis Nutbrock, who I know has kind of led this charge on this and Ethan is pulling it together. And again, just a big thank you for all the hard work because this part of the job as planning commissioner takes a lot of effort and it takes a lot of work to make this happen. And again, thank you so much and give my appreciation to the the commission, if you would, please, Ethan.
Yeah, thank you. Takes a lot of concentration too, right, Dennis?
I can see in looking at all the the edits on the on the attached, the attachments. It's got your, it's got your fingerprints on it and it's got Dennis Nutbrock's fingerprints all over it too. It looks, it looks really good. It's housekeeping that was needed and I'm glad to see it happening.
That's, I'll second that, thank you.
So with that, I would like to make a motion. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance two zero two one dash zero four repealing sections eighteen dot one zero dot zero seven zero and eighteen dot one three zero dot zero nine zero and amending sections eighteen dot one zero dot one zero zero eighteen dot four zero dot zero one zero eighteen dot one three zero dot zero two zero eighteen dot one three zero dot zero eight zero eighteen dot one four zero dot zero three zero eighteen dot one four zero dot zero four zero eighteen dot one five zero dot zero two zero eighteen dot one six five dot zero four zero eighteen dot one six five dot zero nine zero eighteen dot one eight five dot zero two zero eighteen dot two three zero dot zero nine zero eighteen dot three zero zero dot zero three zero and eighteen dot three zero zero dot one three zero of the Senator, the Center Municipal Code to eliminate conflicts in the application of residential density.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance twenty 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 twenty-one dash oh four repealing eighteen dot ten dot zero seven zero and eighteen dot one three oh dot zero nine zero and amending sections. And city attorney, can I just say as listed in the staff report, all these different sections, right? Do I need to read these again?
Mayor, you you can reference them as listed in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Although Senator Municipal Code to eliminate conflicts in the application of residential density. And this is an ordinance, if I could get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Both.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin.
Yes.
Councilmember Servini.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero four unanimously. Thank you, council, and again, thank you, Ethan, for all your hard work and and continuing to work on our municipal code. Good job.
Thanks, council.
So with that, the only other item on the agenda is to adjourn. If I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you, good night.